Topographic conditions.
But the advantage is no flooding.
Greg, uh, Greg?
Yeah, yes.
Are you just in your backyard or are you?
No, I'm nowhere near my backyard.
Nice.
That's a nice virtual background.
That's great and filled.
Yeah. Yeah. We're up at, uh, we're up at Lake Placid.
Nice. That's a nice place to be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nice people up there.
Yes, strange, strange times though.
It's too bad that you have to do this while you're there.
Nah, what else do I have to do? You know what I mean?
I don't know, have a cocktail?
Yeah. Wait, we can't do that? Just kidding Bruce, no cock.
You knock the video out when you reach for the glass.
I can blur anything out. Oh, perfect. Still waiting on people, right?
Yeah.
Dude, am I missing anybody in the, uh?
I'm looking to see.
Serge is here, Greg is here.
Yeah, I'm looking to see in the attendees if, I don't see, um, I don't see Diana yet. Or Dan, Daniel.
All right, there we go. Hello?
And there's Matthew.
Hey guys. Dylan?
Yes, sir.
Is there, well first of all, good evening. Is there, uh, is there anyone from the public on the line that has told you that they want to make a public comment?
Yes, one person.
All right, good.
Diana is there, you can put her on.
Okay, hold on, just minimizing this. There's I am.
Twenty-three people out there, wow.
How many?
Twenty-three is what it says.
Twenty-three, ten of us and thirteen attendees.
Yep, well, we have a busy, busy agenda for sure. Is there anybody who we think is supposed to be joining us but has not yet logged in?
You mean from the board?
Yeah.
I don't see Daniel yet.
All right, we'll give him a minute.
Serge?
Yeah?
My thought perhaps is you'd want to, after all business, look at the Doe application next.
I think that's probably a good, uh, a good idea.
Keep, get some people off the line, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think that's a fair point. So we'll do that. Well, we'll announce that once we call the meeting to order. Uh, Dan just texted, he said just one more minute, he's gonna dial in. So if everyone, um, can just be patient for just another couple of minutes, we're gonna get our last, uh, board member on, and then we will call the meeting to order.
People raising their hand to speak, but we have to wait till public comment, right?
That's correct. So, Dylan, everyone can hear me, right?
Yeah, everybody can hear you.
Okay, so everyone just please sit tight. We understand that this is kind of unusual, right, doing this virtually, but we will give everyone a chance to speak at their given time. There'll be public comment, um, once we open the meeting, and then each individual application will give members of the public the opportunity to ask questions and make comments, so just, uh, sit tight. Dylan, did you see the chat from Mr. Yosef whether we can?
I responded to him, I said we can hear, we can see him.
Got it, got it, got it. Now what have I do?
I do not see him Dylan, should I see him or just you?
No, you could see him too, if you go, if you click down on the bottom for pa- uh, for participants.
Okay.
There, then it should show up on the, uh, right, you should have panelists and attendees. If you click on attendees, you'll see the list of all the people attending.
Oh, actually you have to ask for it, okay.
All right, you know what, why don't we get started, Dan will dial in hopefully before the beginning of the Hill's application, but we could at least uh, call the meeting to order. What I'm gonna do is I'm just going to, because this is a virtual Zoom meeting, I'm gonna read more of the agenda than I normally do. For the duration of the coronavirus health emergency, Village Hall is closed to the public and meetings are held with participants at remote locations connected to conference software provided by zoom.us. Members of the public are invited to view meetings live using the Zoom client, which also allows them to raise a hand and contribute with voice and video when they're invited to do so during public portions of the meeting. So, please make sure that if you need to speak, you could raise your hand or send in the chat to Dylan, but, um, please also bear in mind that it will be during the times where I call for the public to ask questions or make comments. All right, so we'll call the meeting to order. Uh, we'll start by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so this, uh, statement is required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board at Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, The Record, and by submission to all persons entitled to seeing as provided by law of a schedule including date and time of this meeting. Please note that a curfew of 11:00 PM is strictly adhered to by the zoning board. No matter involving an applicant will be started after 10:00 to 13:00 PM. At 10:00 PM, we will make a determination and invite applicants as to whether they will be heard. If an applicant cannot be heard because of the lateness of the hour, the matter will be carried over to a future meeting to be determined by the board at 10:00 PM. This is important for tonight because we have a nu- a number of applications on the agenda. Uh, we try to be, uh, you know, cognizant that people have been waiting, so we've had multiple meetings via Zoom since we began the process. Uh, we normally have two meetings a month, I think this month we're gonna have five. So we really are trying to work through all of these applications, but the reality is that we, we, you know, I think we all have a, um, just a, a time limit for where we can be productive on Zoom. So I really don't think we're gonna be starting any applications much later than 10:00 PM tonight. Uh, I'd like to get through everything, but, um, if the time doesn't permit, there'll, there'll be plenty of other opportunities, uh, Zoom meetings continue for the foreseeable future. Uh, okay, so Jane, please conduct roll call.
Sergio Allegra?
Here.
Greg Brown?
Here.
Gary Negritz?
Here.
Diana Ruhl?
Here.
John Pepietra?
Here.
Isaac Lebo?
Here.
Matthew Bandel?
Here.
Daniel Perlman?
Here.
Okay. Um, now we need to approve the minutes of June 9, 2020. Someone make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from June 9, 2020?
Isaac, do we have a second?
Second, Matt?
Okay, Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negritz?
Yes.
Diana Ruhl?
Yes.
John Pepietra?
Yes.
Isaac Lebo?
Yes.
Matthew Bandel? Daniel Perlman?
Yes.
All right, great. Um, next we have non-agenda items. Are there any board members who would like to make comments on matters not on the agenda this evening? There being none, so I, now is the time for members of the public to make comments on matters not on the agenda this evening. I believe we have at least one. If we could unmute that gentleman? Anthony Fasano, there we are.
Great. Uh, thank you Chairman Anthony Fasano, 671 Eastern Court in Ridgewood, New Jersey. Good evening, board members, thank you. I'm gonna keep this real brief. Um, we're just seeking guidance on a matter. My, uh, my wife and I and our three, three young kids, we live in the, uh, area behind the duck pond. Um, obviously the past three months, all of us in town and beyond have been kind of homeschooling and, you know, with summer looming and, and no camps really open. Um, we decided to look into getting a permanent pool to keep the, kind of the kids busy over the summer. Um, my wife contacted the building department, we inquired about the permanent pool options uh, for an above-ground pool, and we were told that we would need both the permit and the variance since technically we have two front yards, since there's a street behind us. So they told us that, you know, with a timeline, we, we wouldn't be, really be able to get that variance probably till October, based on everything. So we decided against the permanent option, but we were able to find a portable, plastic pool. Uh, we purchased it, my wife and I set it up, you know, in thirty minutes. We filled it up and the kids have been using it, um, together. And then last week we found out, uh, from the town that we needed to take the pool down due to the variance and the permit issue, so you know, we have, obviously we have no problem with going to get a permit from the building department, um, now that we know that we need it for, again, this plastic, kind of portable, plastic pool. Um, in fact, we did already speak with the building department and we explained the situation, we already emptied, emptied the water out of this, this pool. Um, however, you know, this really is a, a temporary pool, there's no plumbing, there's no heating, there's one electric plug that gets plugged into an outlet for a simple basket filter. Um, and we're here to see if there's either any way, we're seeking guidance basically, we're, we're trying to find out if there's any way, one, that we don't need a variance since it is temporary, portable, um, and we're planning to take it down in a few months, um, because there is a reference in the code to portable pools being exempt, I believe. Or, second thing that we're looking for is, is there any possible way of providing some kind of, uh, an exemption, a ninety-day waiver or something, um, so that we can just work with the building department and get the permit? Um, and then if, when we take it down in a few months, if we need to get a variance, if we're gonna put it back up, we certainly can, but under the conditions. Um, I should also mention that in our backyard, there's a retaining wall for the road behind the house, so we're not on that back road, we're well below it, so it's not like the, it's anywhere near a road or anything of that, of that nature. Um, you know, honestly, the application fees and expenses for the permit and the variance are probably gonna po- cost more than this pool even, even cost, so again, just to be clear, of course, we understand that if any, we were able to get a waiver, if we don't need a variance, we still would need to get the permit from the building department, and we've been in contact and we've been talking with Mr. Yatik there, um, to make sure it's fenced in and safe, but we're just kind of seeking guidance from the board and council tonight on the matter and seeing if, what options we might have. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fasano, so really, uh, I'm gonna turn this over to our Board Attorney, Bruce Whitaker.
Mr. Fasano, did you get a letter or confirmation from the zoning officer that, uh, variance relief was required?
We didn't get a letter. Um, the, uh, the town was in the area cutting trees down, and someone from the town mentioned it to us and then ended up talking with, uh, the building department, uh, by phone, and they told us that we need to take it down, and then I did speak to the building department, uh, Mr. Yaka the other day, and I told him all the water would be out of it immediately, and we drained it, and, uh, he said he would come and take a look and, and make sure that was done, and, and he hasn't come yet. Um, that was last week, and, uh, and I did tell him that I was gonna try to see if there was any way that we wouldn't have to take it down, but we immediately took the water out. So it's been all phone, it's been all phone correspondence, sir.
Okay, so, the, the way this has to be handled is by a state law, it's not a law with the village of Ridgewood. The state municipal land use law, uh, when you have someone, I guess from the building department here was serving as zoning officer, but if the zoning officer says that you require a variance, the board doesn't have the ability to waive what the zoning officer says or, or writes in a letter to you. What you have the right to do under municipal land use law is to challenge the zoning officer's decision, and at the same time, if the zone, to the, to the zoning board, to this board. And at the same time, if the zoning board uh, has the right to also grant the variance if they feel the variance is necessary. But unfortunately, the board doesn't have the right under state law to grant any exemptions, waivers, ninety-day, uh, provisional type of use, et cetera. And I know, and it's unfortunate, I know, we all know that these are exceptional times, but there were a series of executive orders that were issued, including some executive orders pertaining to land use, but the executive orders did not give any board or any official the ability to waive, um, any of the zoning requirements in a municipality. So your steps would have to be to go back to the zoning officer to determine that a, a variance is required, and then you'd have to make the application to do that. And I, unfortunately, I believe with the agenda that we have, that may actually occur after the swimming season. I don't control agendas, but it's, it's a first come, first served. There's a lot of people been waiting in line, as the chairman said earlier in the meeting. I think we're having four or five meetings this month, just to try to play catch-up, so.
Okay.
So that's, 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 that's the way we'd have to go, so the first step would be to check with the zoning officer and get a ruling, and then if they confirm that you do need a variance, then you would have to seek variance.
So, first, I just have a question, does this, I mean, when I drive by many homes with young children, many of them have pools, this rule applies, all these pools should be permitted, that, is that correct?
Uh, you know, i- it's not for us, it's the board to determine, it's up to the zoning officer to, uh, interpret, by state law, interpret what the ordinance says.
But does our town make the rules as to whether or not a pool needs, like a, his pool in particular, but these pools that people are putting in that have little motors just to keep the water circulating so they don't have to dump them every time? Our town has made the ruling that they want to have these permitted through, through the zoning or, or the building department, correct? Is that, or do you not know that? Maybe Jane would know that.
I, I have no knowledge about, this is the first that this has come to my attention.
I, I just have one question, Mr. Whitaker, for the, I mean, you said to go to the zoning officer to get the official ruling. In the code, the village code, it does refer to these port, like a portable pool not having to necessarily require the variance. It would be up to that individual then to determine what a portable pool means, correct?
This, you are correct, the state law gives jurisdiction to the zoning officer to initially interpret a zoning ordinance.
Okay, and, and the zoning officer in this case would be the building department, I guess, because I spoke to them, is that right, or is that?
It would either be that or Jane, have you seen Paola involved with this?
Um, I haven't really heard about this, so, but that would be Paula. Is the pool located? Just, I'm misunderstood, I think.
It's just in the backyard, our backyard. The problem that we're having is because there's a street in front of us and behind us, technically we have two front yards, so because we have the pool in our backyard, but it's not, you know, they're saying tech legally, it's not a backyard because you're on another street, so because of that, we need the variance, otherwise we would have just.
Could you, are you the corner of Eastern and Pershing?
Yeah.
So can you, there's setbacks for zoning as to where the front yard
Right.
So can you just move it so you don't, so it's truly in your backyard and not in your front yard?
The problem is, well, the problem is it is in our backyard, but the backyard legally is a, is considered a front yard.
You have two front yards.
Right. So when you.
But every, every, every house has a backyard, even if it, believe it or not, even if it's not in the back. It could be that your side yard is considered the backyard.
The problem is our side yard.
The zoning officer point out what your legal backyard is?
Yeah, she, she did, but there's just not enough room on the side for it, so. And then, and to your point, um, if we took the forty-foot setback from the back road, like, because you have to use the front yard setback, you did, there just wouldn't be enough room, that's the problem we're having, so. Again, it just happens because we have the, the road behind us and we have two front yards, otherwise we would just go to the building department, get this paperwork filled out and be done with it, but unfortunately, I guess.
I'm just, maybe I'm a little confused. You have Eastern Park, you have Eastern Court.
Yeah.
I'm looking at a map, Pershing Avenue.
Yep.
And you say there's another road?
There's a road behind it, which I believe is Wall Street, that's another dead end. Like a cul-de-sac, we're in between the two cul-de-sacs, Eastern and, um, Eastern and Wall.
Do you have, do you have three front yards?
Um, no, because to the one side of us is like a town easement, like a walking path easement. And I believe that's the side yard, and then we have our front yard on, and a front yard on both roads, and then a neighbor on the other side. Like our, like where we live, Pershing turns into Eastern, like it, there's a curve there.
So you, you're, you, you're, what? So the issues Eastern and Wall Street are your issues?
Right, because Wall, Wall Street's the issue, because it's in our backyard, so it's making us have that as a front yard.
So he's not a traditional corner house, he's got a, two, two roads bordering him.
Right, it's not a corner house, right, there's a ro- board, road on each side, but then land on both sides of us. So, maybe that's.
There's no room on your side yards at all to put the pool?
Not enough room between the house and the yard lot. And like the patio, we have a patio on the side.
Can you put it on the patio?
Um, I guess we can look into that.
I'm just trying to give you solutions that will actually get your kids.
No, I, you know, I appreciate it, believe me, I'm trying to think through them too, yeah. I know, I can play around with that, and, and maybe your point actually may be a good point in that it's not a typical corner lot. Maybe if I explain that to the zoning officer who wasn't actually at the house.
Yeah, but if you have a patio, you could, they can sell you to put it on the patio if it's not in the front yard, you know what I'm saying, there's.
Right.
If there are alternatives.
Okay, the question I would ask, Anthony, the question I would ask is, where am I legally allowed to place this without a variance, just a permit?
Okay, that's a good question.
It's possible that you can't, right, like, so for example, I live in a house, if I wanted to do an addition, even if I went out one centimeter in any direction, I need a variance.
Right.
My lot, that's my house, it may be that there is no place where you could legally put it, but that's the question that I would ask the zoning officer.
Okay.
Is there anywhere on this property I can put a pool, a pool?
Okay, great.
And when you go to the zoning officer, bring your survey with you.
Okay, yes, I have it right here, I'll bring it, thank you. All right, great, thank you Chairman, thank you everyone for giving me a few minutes, I appreciate your time.
A pleasure, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we are still in the public comment section, are there any other members of the public who would like to make comments on matters not on the agenda this evening? So please, virtually raise your hand or send a chat.
We have one dial-in caller, they're not able to raise their hand, should I just have them come in, just?
Yeah, just ask, they could be for another application, but at least unmute them, what we could ask a question, with, so a public comment.
Seven oh four. Well, six seven oh four can hear us?
Hello?
Hi, David, can I?
No, no, this, I, I, I'm on number four today, Chris Aleppo, so this is not, uh, I'm having some technical issues on my computer, so I called in also.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll just put, I'll, I'll just go on mute. All right, very good. All right, so no one else, right?
No others.
No one else has raised a hand or, or chatted? All right, very good, so we will now move on to old business. This is the matter of John Allison Hills, an application to construct an addition uncovered front porch, which will result in a front yard setback of thirty-five point seven feet, where forty-five feet is required, at three seventeen Downstreet, block three two zero two, lot two six, in an R-two zone, this has been continued from May twenty-six, twenty twenty, without further notice.
I have the Hills in, who else needs to come in for them?
This is John Hills, it would be Dave Mailand and Ron Eng. Ron is most likely under his architectural name, format, Formactive, active.
Got it. And Dave Thurston?
Dave Mailand.
Oh, all right.
Good evening, yep, this is Ron Eng from Formactive Architects.
Good evening, uh, Chairman, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Good evening. John and Allison Hills.
The, um, same individuals who were sworn in and testified last time will be testifying this evening?
That is correct, Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Please proceed, please proceed.
You're still on the road, go ahead.
Thank you again, this is, uh, David Mailand, the attorney for the applicants, John and Allison Hills, we bear before you back on May twenty-sixth where the board had made a number of comments, uh, which my uh, applicants have taken into consideration, they've met, uh, multiple times with the architects and have submitted to you revised drawings and plans, uh, which have been circulated in connection with this meeting. The architect will comment on those in greater detail, but in some, they have softened the front elevation, uh, reduced, uh, the size of the porch and actually the encroachment of it into the front yard setback, as well as, uh, reduce the height and the pitch of the roof. Um, with that being said, I believe that applicant, uh, Mr. John Hills would like to say a few comments to the board before we go on to the architectural testimony.
Thanks, Jane, good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members, thank you again for having us and giving us the opportunity to, um, bring our revised plans to you, to you all tonight. Um, so really, as, as Dave mentioned, and, uh, Ron, our architect, will get into the detail. I just wanted to say that, thank you for the last meeting, after listening to the feedback. Um, we made new revisions, and we realized we've actually made, in our minds, a better design. Something that we feel is in harmony with the streetscape of the neighborhood. Um, and, and as, uh, as Dave mentioned, we did submit one exhibit, um, as per Mr. Perlman's, um, uh, advice last time regarding sex setbacks adjacent to our, uh, properties along the north side of Downstreet. We have also reduced the front yard setback, um, as a point of consideration raised by, uh, Mr. Negritz, I apologize for your, uh, my pronunciation if I've got that wrong. Um, and then with respect to, to Mr. Rold's comments, um, regarding the height, we reduced the height of the roof, um, to more scale the neighborhood, we minimized the second floor volume, making it more modest to blend in with the neighborhood. So, in all, we do believe we've made a right balance between height and aesthetics in our new plans. Um, and then I do also want to note that, um, as per Mr. Bandel's comment on the last meeting, um, we did agree that we would not enclose the front porch at any point in the future. So, um, Ron, our architect, will go into the details, but thank you again for giving us the chance, um, to present tonight.
And, as Anthony said, unless the board has, uh, direct questions of the applicant, um, himself, I would, uh, like to call, uh, Mr. Ron Eng, the architect, uh, responsible for the drawings.
Yeah, before you do, just to give board members, uh, the opportunity, does any board member have direct questions from Mr. Hills before the architect, uh, testified? Doesn't look like it, please proceed.
Okay, good evening, board members, uh, my name is Ron Eng, I think we spoke previously. The, uh, you do, I want to first make sure that you're in possession with the revised drawings.
For the record, put down the, uh, revision date that you have, and how many pages?
It's six eleven. Dave, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and it pages one to six.
That is correct, and, uh, for the record, we'll mark those as, uh, I believe we're on eight, three, uh, jointly.
That's correct.
Okay, uh, furthermore, you have the exhibit from, uh, Lantelme, Curran's and Associates, the surveyor, who we contracted to examine the front yard conditions of neighboring properties on Downstreet.
That we'll go to mark as eight four.
And for the record, that's, uh, dated June eleventh, revised as of June sixteenth, and signed by Christopher, uh, Lantelme, uh, in connection with the setbacks of the surrounding property ownership.
Right, that revision was requested because though they had marked dimensions for the front yards, they did not, uh, we also asked them to go back and look at each individual building and express whether or not the porches were covered or open. So, the other thing I want to point out of the survey is that it's, it's the dimensions are drawn to the front of significant building, which is generally a stoop or a porch, so not the stairs, not necessarily building wall. So this does, uh, change to some extent our discussion from previous, where we were talking about a front yard requirement forty-five feet, and how we were e- expressing that our front building was thirty-nine point five, but these dimensions are talk. But these dimensions are talking about front of porch. And therefore the survey and comparable properties, uh, are, you'll look at the off, what he regards as offset in column four. So they're three seventeen Downs, which is the property in question, is, uh, we are talking about an offset in feet of thirty-five point seven feet. So when we look at, uh, the major discussion previously was about the front yard. And the encroachment within the front yard. And, uh, you'll see that we've made many accommodations, uh, to bulk, but the initial conversation when the variance was about the covered porch. So the covered porch, right now will project into the front yard to the same dimension as the current stoop. So that's a point I want to, if I, if I could reinforce with some of the other properties, that they're of very similar nature. And, uh, there is, in order to accomplish that, there was a reduction in the depth of our porch. There was a reduction in the size and width of our covered, of the canopy on the porch. So those comments from previous, the previous meeting were taken into account. So there were some reductions. But, uh, part of the important discussion here is that the existing projection remains.
So Ron, just for clarification of the board, the existing sta, the port, front porch as proposed does not go any further than where the current steps are on the property, uh, leading up into the house, correct?
Correct.
And with regard to the other properties, uh, listed on A four, none of those, uh, comply with the forty-five foot setback. Is that correct?
As surveyed, correct.
And with that aside, can you go into the detail of the numerous other changes that the applicants have made? In connection with the board's comment from the May twenty-sixth meeting and, uh, specifically walk them through what was done to try to accommodate the, the board and, uh, their previous comments?
Uh, so we can look at, if we look at the revised drawings, let's start there. We will see that, um, let's see, we can direct you to. First of all, yes?
On the revised drawings, if you can just direct them to the specific plan sheet so that, uh.
Yes.
Anyone can.
Yes, I think we'll start with the site plan. So this is, uh, item one on page one. So you can see that right now the dimension thirty-five point seven, let me zoom in myself. Is expressed in the site plan as the existing, as the proposed location of stoop, but that is also the existing location of the stoop as shown in the survey.
And that was a reduction from the prior application where that was originally thirty-five point seven. They brought that back a foot to keep in line with the existing stairs. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And go on.
So right now that, that leaves a projection, um, the, the existing stoop was three foot ten. That's what we're maintaining. It's on the drawings. And the canopy, the covered, uh, portion of this is the same dimension.
And, uh, overall square footage of the porch, that's been reduced as well. Can you explain?
Has been reduced, uh, let me check my notes. It has been reduced from a hundred and fifty-eight square feet to a hundred and forty-two square feet.
And, uh, not only has the square footage been reduced, it also, the, the width of the porch has been reduced as well. Now that stops at the property lines, that, or not the property.
Stops at the building, it's aligned with the building edge. So it was reduced by about three feet. Uh, similarly, the columns have been reduced to just lessen the impact on scale on the street. So some of the proportion, we're very focused on proportions of the facade. And so when we made changes to the height and the ridge line and the roof, the roof pitches, there were also some, some modifications to the porch.
So these modifications were made to balance the application more and really bring it into the, the streetscape. So they reduced, uh, the width of the porch as well as encroachment into the front yard setback. Um, and also even the column so that it, it wouldn't be as, um, aesthetically pleasing for, uh, for the board as well. Is that correct?
That is correct. And in few, if I put you back to the, the survey, the adjacent property survey. You'll notice that there are two properties that are within, uh, of two feet of a similar, that are covered. In this space, I will point you to, uh, three eleven Downs, which is a neighbor, which is thirty-seven point nine. Uh, has a thirty-seven point nine foot setback, which is a covered porch. And three fifty-three Downs, which is thirty-seven point eight feet, uh, which is also a covered porch. There are, uh, some properties that have, have a greater encroachment into the, the front yard setback, but they, uh, they have open porches or open stoops.
But again, the, the modifications that were made to the proposed porch, this is to fit into the nature and character of the surrounding properties. Is that correct?
Very much. We believe so.
And outside of the, the physical changes to the porch itself, what other changes were made to the plan to accommodate the comments of the board from the last meeting?
So specifically, we had a great deal of discussion about roof pitch and the overall height of, uh, the building addition, the second story addition. So pitches were changed such that the overall height of the building was reduced from, uh, twenty-seven foot one to twenty-five foot three. So approximately a two-foot reduction with a change in pitch. Uh, you'll see in the elevations, I do not know if you have access to the previous submission. But if so, you'll notice that the, the main roof and addition, all the, the, the gables are all reduced.
And the, the gables are reduced and even the overhangs were reduced as well. Is that correct?
Correct. They were reduced eighteen inches to a foot. So the overall roof area has lessened, uh, certainly from view from the street.
And this was to balance the application as a whole and to take into the comments of, I believe, Miss Rule at the previous meeting. Where she had concerns with regard to the, the pitch of the roof and, and potentially the, the height of the project as well. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, and some accommodations had to be made. There, there was some storage attic. There was some mechanical space. That was all lost when we reduced the, uh, the interior space partially because we have code minimums. Um, so many of these interior attic spaces that we were using for, uh, accessory uses, um, mechanical and storage were, were removed and they had to be relocated.
So they compromised on the, the attic space as well. I believe the second floor went from eight point eight inches. Now it's only eight feet, uh, flat. So they, they have been compromised by the applicant, uh, throughout the home to try to accommodate the, the consideration on what the project would look like from the, from the street as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, uh, what other changes to the, the project were made since the last submission?
So the, the, there are some setback, the, the overhangs as, uh, Mr. Mailand mentioned were reduced. The, there, the, we said the porch canopy, the overhang was reduced, the front porches we, we expressed were reduced. The, um, let me see, what is, mentally. We've mentioned that some of the details have been lessened, column sizes. Attic space, the. This is interior. These are, I'm looking at my notes, but many of these are interior modifications that we had to make because of the lowering of the main structure.
So throughout the project, there were compromises that were made up on behalf of the applicant to achieve the visual aesthetics and architectural value up from the streetscape to better fit in this project to the, the existing streetscape. That's, um, currently at Downstreet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, with that being said, are there any other modifications that were made that you would like to specifically comment to the board? Or can you address any, uh, questions that they may have at this time?
I think, uh, we, right now, questions would be the next step.
Okay, very good. So we're going to go, as we've been doing, uh, just one by one. So first we'll start with Jonathan Pepietro. Any questions, sir?
I just want to ask about the attic. Is there any access to it, a pull-down door, or is it just totally closed off?
Right now, these are, the rooms that are left are, are what we call cathedral ceilings. So they're open ceilings to a pitched roof. There were attic spaces that we had set back in the, in the middle of the building for a mechanical, so those have been removed.
Okay, so there's no access to that attic now at all. It's all just closed off.
It, it, well, it's not closed, it's open, but there is no attic.
I see. Okay, understood. Thank you.
I just, there's no attic.
There, there may be a few crawl space here and there to get to Eves, but it'll be on the order of access panels. Nothing like a stair, like an attic stair.
I'm just trying to find out what the headroom is.
The headroom.
Building high is now twenty-nine feet, twenty-nine nine. And. The.
No, no more twenty-nine, the twenty-nine nine has been reduced.
Well, why am I not a revised drawing that doesn't say that? And last time it was thirty-some feet, which is why you needed a variance for the roof height. Unless you went with a nine twelve pitch everywhere.
The top of the, the highest ridge at this point is twenty-seven foot four.
Yeah, so the variance from the last time was specifically just for the front yard setback. It wasn't for the roof. But we were making some adjustments because, um, Diana had some suggestions about the roof height and the roof pitch, which when we went back and looked at it, we made the adjustments to scale it down a bit to bring down the volume overall. So the roof, the height of the building.
The original roof was in excess of thirty feet.
It, it's.
Don't see this dimension. I don't see a thirty, I don't see a thirty-plus dimension. Sorry.
So, sorry, this is John Hills. On the plans that we originally presented in May. The height of the roof was submitted as twenty-nine feet on sheet A one.
Correct.
It's twenty-nine nine and three quarters.
Correct.
John, on the elevations on drawing five as well on the previous submission?
Right. But in any event, right now, with the current trend before us, the height of the roof does not require variance.
As our understanding.
So what do we move on to? And Gary, we'll get back to you as well. Isaac, any questions?
Isaac's not eligible on this one.
Ah, okay. Sorry about that.
Neither is John, actually.
Ah, okay. Well, I, I think you could, um.
Ask questions.
You could ask questions, right, Bruce?
Yes.
You could ask. Okay, that's fine. Uh, Greg? Greg Brown?
Yeah, hi, everybody. Um, no, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, moving along. Dan Pearlman, any questions?
You're on mute.
Yeah, you're, you're muted.
No, I'm looking, I'm looking at a couple of things. I don't have any questions right now.
All right, very good. Matthew Bandelt, any questions?
No, just, uh, one quick question. So, um, another board member had asked about attic space. So if I understand it correctly, basically on the second floor, you're going to be having cathedral ceilings rather than having, um, like, uh, any usable attic space other than, uh, a, a small access panel. Is that correct?
There are some areas where there's, there's less than five feet that will close off or accommodate, um, odds, odd sections where roof lines meet. So there'll be some areas in the interior where there'll be some crawl space and attic. But for the most part, yes, you'll have high, high ceilings in the rooms.
Got it. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, Diana Rule, any questions?
Just a quick question. On the second story in the front, that bump out, what's the distance from the bump out? What's the setback on that bump out on the second floor?
On the second floor, okay. Thirty-nine, the, from, from the front property line, right? From the front street?
Yes, yes, yes.
The existing bump out is a thirty-nine point five feet.
So you need, not only for the porch, but for the existing structure as well?
Correct.
You need a variance. Okay.
But that, the, that's the exist, the existing bump out on the ground floor is at thirty-nine point five.
Yeah, so, but to go up, you need a variance for that. That area as well, kind of.
That is correct, for the second floor.
For the second floor.
Yes.
It's all the same variance, though. You, yeah.
Yeah, no, I just, the, one's a solid structure, one's an open.
Understood.
Yes, I just wanted to know the exact amount.
Anything else, Diana?
Question.
All right. Gary Negrits, back to you. Any, any additional questions?
I'm just trying to follow up on that, uh, attic space, so give me another minute or two and go to somebody else.
Sure. Is there anyone else who's got any questions?
I'm not sure you understand.
I don't know what that was. All right, Gary, it's okay. Take your time. The attic space is just to, if, if you're looking for them in the plans, they, they really only occur over the bathrooms. Kids in hallways, so in the rooms proper, you'll go, you'll see the other side of, you know, whatever, fur, fur doubt framing. But it's really in closets and, and bathrooms that you'd have attic spaces above, in the corridor possibly.
So it really is practically impossible for anyone to ever use any space up there for any type of, um, living space.
Very, very difficult. It'll just be storage only likely.
Right. And, and there's no access, there's no staircase, there's no pull-down stairs.
Hold out, I, you know, we haven't, I believe you'll just have an access panel. You'll have to carry a ladder, whether or not they do a pull-down. But you won't be, it won't be standing height. I believe in some places, certainly at the lower part of the Eves, it, it goes to nothing, but that's, that's highest point is maybe four foot six.
Okay, thank you. Gary, any other questions on this attic or otherwise?
I just don't understand how I can get four foot six when I've got a, uh, from the. If, if you, I took the flat ceiling at eight feet on the second floor, I've got eight foot eight above it. Now, I realize you said the bedrooms all have, uh. Full ceilings, so that eliminates that. So that means it, but you got a lot more than four feet over the bathrooms and the, uh. I don't think, you, you didn't say you had a cathedral ceiling in the bathroom.
No, there, there is a, there is a hung ceiling in the, in the bathrooms. So there is space above them. I mean, there, the structure takes up, there is dimension, structure, insulation, roofing. So it's true, it's not, uh, not five feet worth, but it'll end up being several feet.
But may, uh, ask the board, is it a concern that any of this space would be converted to living area or?
Potentially stipulate.
Certainly stipulate or put a, uh, agree to a condition that, uh, it wouldn't be converted to, uh, additional living space at, uh, any further time. If that's a concern of the board.
No, it's just an arithmetic issue. How many square feet have a ceiling? Greater than seven feet. That's all. And it doesn't have to have a ceiling. It doesn't even have to have a floor. It could be measured from the top of the ceiling joist on the second floor to the underside of the rafter, the roof. And that's, that's all. It's just about the arithmetic of square feet of gross building area. That's all. And. It's, it's not earth-shattering. I just like to have all the numbers right when they leave this board. That's all.
Understood. And I, I defer to the architect for those calculations.
Uh, we can provide a building section at the, that location to show the thicknesses of the various rafters and choice, ceiling structure. And you'll see that what, what we have left over is not, maybe at the very peak of it, you'll have a bit more. But certainly at the areas where you get up into it, if it's not at the absolute top of the ridge. You know, you, if you frame the, the, you'll see at the top of, as a ridge beam. If it'd be a twelve-inch ridge beam, but the actual dimension there, when you have the rafters hit, plus the roofing, plus the sheathing, plus the insulation. You, you end up losing more than a few feet. So if you're asking the total building height is twenty-seven foot four, uh, excuse me, what the dimension you were saying at, uh.
Row is twenty-nine.
Uh, no, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
So twenty-seven foot at the topmost ridge. If we take the worst case. So twenty seven foot at the topmost ridge. If we take the worst case, ten, seven foot four, I mean, we'll lose four feet almost immediately from structure from the, the lower floors. There's eight, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen from twenty seven, that leaves nine minus four, so that's how you get five feet. And it'll be maybe six feet at the, at the, at the ridge, but as soon as that rafter starts to drop, you know, in no time, you'll be at three or four feet.
The rafter's at a nine twelve pitch. Right? Pitch is, is, is nine twelve, but the only dimension I can find on the documents you gave me.
Nine twelve, I think it's, well, the largest one is seven twelve.
Okay.
I believe it was previously twelve nine. I, I just want to make sure that you, you both are on the same page for the revised plan as opposed to the previously submitted one at May twenty sixth. The May twenty sixth was twelve nine and at the May twenty sixth meeting, we were at a, I believe, a twenty nine and three, nine and three quarters height as well. So applicant has made concessions off those and, and that's on the revised plan that's, should be for you today.
Sixteen, seventeen, twenty. So between top of finished ceiling, Mr. Negrits, between top of finished ceiling, our calculations, so top of finished ceiling on the second floor and top of ridge is seventeen less than twenty is seven foot four. Seven foot four, if you take away the structure of the ceiling and take the, the structure of the roof, that, that leaves you four, four foot and change. Five feet if we had no, if they have no finish. And that's the top, the topmost ridge. The lower, the lower gables are twenty five foot fourths or top. So in those cases, you'll have two and a half, three feet.
And Ron, correct me from, from the May twenty sixth application and the plans that were before, we lowered the roof by two feet, six inches. Is that correct?
Believe so, yeah, something short of three feet, yes.
Anything else, Gary?
That's it.
Okay. Are there any other questions on board members before we open it up to the public?
We have two.
Yeah, so now is the time for anyone from the public to ask questions of the applicant, applicant's attorney or architect.
Yeah, we have three. Hold on one second, I'm gonna invite the first one in. David Thurston.
Mr. Thurston.
This is David Thurston. I'm not here to ask questions, but to speak on behalf of the applicant.
All right, so just pause one second. I just want to make sure if anyone out there who has a question, we give them the opportunity to ask questions and then we'll open it up for comments.
I have one other person raising their hand. Eve Ratchles.
Mr. Ratchles?
We just want to comment that we have no objection to the application.
Okay, so hang on one second. We're gonna have comments. Anyone without Dylan. Is there anyone else Dylan?
No, those are the only two that were raising their hand.
All right, so we're gonna go to Mr. Thurston first. This is for comments.
Mr. Thurston, if you would raise your, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please give your full name and your address.
My name is David Thurston and I live at three, three, two Libby Avenue. But of particular consequence to the application, I live on the corner of Downs and Libby. I've lived here since nineteen ninety nine and I spend a great deal of my time in the backyard, which looks directly across Down Street from the Hill Home. And from reviewing the plans and the updates, we're in complete agreement with them that it will upgrade the street and we find it very desirable from an aesthetic standpoint. And just as another comment with respect to the height of the home, I'm sure the board knows that on the south side of Down Street, except for the house directly to the west of me, which is across the street from the hills, all the homes are far and above twenty seven feet. And even on the north side of Downs itself, there are a series of five or six cakes similar to the hills. But then at the east end of the street, you have several homes which are also well above twenty seven feet. So in terms of streetscape, it really falls right within the, the aesthetic of the street. So we, we wholeheartedly think that it will be good for the street, be good for the town, and we support them one hundred percent.
Thank you, Mr. Thurston. So next we will move on to Mr. Ratchles. I know you kind of made your comment, but why don't you get sworn in and make your comment on the record?
My name is Steve Ratchles. We have lived at.
Okay.
Hang on one second.
For the record, Mr. Ratchles, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Now please give us your full name and address.
My name is Steve Ratchles. I live at three eleven Down Street. We lived here for about four and a half years. And we are directly next door to the applicant. So if you want to proceed with my comment, we have no objection.
Go ahead.
We have no objection to the application. I think that it will in fact improve the value of our property and the street in the, it will certainly make the, the applicant's house more livable. And I don't see that changing the front to the same distance from the street as we are, I would make any difference. That's my comment.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else on the line who's raised their hand or stands in the chat?
Yes, Carolyn Hancock.
Yes, hi. You want to make a comment regarding this application?
Yes, please.
Raise your right hand, please.
Yep.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Oh, hi, I'm Carolyn Hancock and I live across the street. I'm at three twenty Downs. I live across the street from the hills and I've been here thirty two years. And I would absolutely love to see a beautiful house across the street from me. I wish that my ceiling was higher, you know, the way the houses were built and mine is nineteen fifty. And I'm sure you're aware that all around the corner from me on Northern Parkway, we've had a tremendous amount of building done and the houses are just really becoming so beautiful. They're enhancing the neighborhood. The Hills House will enhance our neighborhood. And I agree with Dave Kristen, if you go up and down the street, there's a lot of houses, Tudor style, lots of other styles with much higher roof lines. And it would just be wonderful to start to enhance our end of the street too. So I'm obviously in great support of this. That's it. That's all I have to say.
Great, thank you very much. Dylan, anyone else?
That is all.
All right, great. So back to Mr. Mailand, any other testimony that you're gonna proffer?
I don't believe we have any further witnesses tonight. I will just say in closing, I believe you've heard from applicant and the architect as well as the exhibits presented, including A4, which was the survey study of the surrounding property owners all on Down Street, which none of them complied with the forty five foot setback, I believe based upon the testimony tonight. In the previous meeting on the May twenty sixth, the applicant has shown that they have a hardship of the location of the existing building and the existing street state. The proposal is consistent with the existing neighborhood patterns and wouldn't be a detriment to any surrounding neighbor, neighboring properties as testified to by the, the neighbors themselves, saying that this would enhance the, the property value and the streetscape. And for that reason, I respectfully request the board grant the variance set forth in the application.
Thank you very much. Hearing is now closed, so we will open it up to board members for deliberation and or motion.
I, I would just say from a, from a setback perspective, the reduction in the front porch to the setback of the current stoop and the reduction in width, along with the calculation of the predominant setback on the street, I think goes a long way in curbing the concern that we, or that I, that I suggested and I think was confirmed by some other people. I think that goes a long way toward quelling that concern. And so I thank the applicant for providing the information and, and making the, the change to the current design.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, no, the, sorry Diana, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
We're probably gonna say the same thing. The only concern I have is the restriction that the front porch would remain open.
Exactly.
If there's, if anyone was going to make a motion.
Gary, I know you, you know, a lot of concerns with the attic. Is there any, assuming this, this, you know, other board members are keen on approving this, is there any type of stipulation you are?
Footage up there is de minimis, so at this point, I really don't have any objections to what they're proposing, the modifications.
I can't really say.
Pardon? Can you?
We, we can hear you, Gary. We can hear you. All right, so does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the currently submitted plans with the stipulation that at no time will the front porch be imposed.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
Diana Rule? Yes. Matthew Bandelt?
Yes.
Daniel Proman?
Yes.
And Chairman Allegra.
Yes. Thank you for making those changes. Congratulations, you're approved. Good luck with your renovations.
Thank you, board members. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Stay safe.
Good luck. Thank you.
Bye bye.
All right, so what we're going to do next is here, we're gonna move the agenda just a little bit. Guidance from our attorney, I think, is wise. We're gonna hear now the Peter and Melissa Doe matter. Dylan, can you just make sure that they're on the line?
Melissa Doe, yes.
Okay, and who else will be testifying?
I think that's it. I think that's it.
Okay, so she's on, so we can go ahead and get started. Oops, sorry, just closed the agenda. The matter is Peter and Melissa Doe, an application to permit the installation of an air conditioning condenser unit within the front yard setback at one forty Liberty Street, block four zero zero two, lot one five, in an R2 zone. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here with my husband, Peter.
Good evening.
Okay. If you'll both be testifying, Mr. Rocco will swear you in.
Yeah, both raise your right hands, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Peter?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for getting us onto the agenda and actually for advancing us a bit. Thank you very much. We, we live on a corner property and so we have two front yards, similar to an earlier debate in this meeting. And we, our, our house is a Victorian house from, I think, nineteen oh four. It's, but the, the best form of air conditioning units are ones which have external condensers. The size of a house means that we need three condensers. Two of them are safely tucked away in backyards, but one of them will have to be in a front yard, which is actually the side yard by Evergreen Terrace. And that's, that's what this application is about.
All right, very good. You wanted to talk about the location and the photo that you submitted, correct?
I'm sure, Melissa, do you, do you submit the pictures and I think you're more familiar with those?
Okay, so the, the condenser unit has to go in that corner section along Evergreen, right below our dining room. It will be below our dining room and our kitchen, tucked away in that corner. The air conditioning company has said that the only reason that location must be there, I'm sorry, I'm reading this, is that putting it in the back of the house around the corner would be against the manufacturer's specifications as ductless refrigerant lines cannot extend longer than eighty two feet per air handler. So there's no other location in our house that would work for this condensing unit that would meet your set, Ridgewood setbacks without violating the manufacturer's specifications.
Yes, so the intention is that the condenser unit would be in that little corner, about thirty two feet setback from the road or from, but the, the end of our property in fact. The dimensions of the condenser are forty two inches high, so three foot, six inches, thirty seven inches wide, thirteen deep. It would be placed on the ground, so it would be no higher than forty two inches. And the intention is that we put shrubs up in front of it so that it would not be visible from the road.
Yeah. Your testimony is, per the manufacturer, there really is no other place that you can place this without requiring an area?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Do any other board members have questions?
You said it has to be a certain distance from the air handler?
Again, I'll read this and we're quoting from the, the installation company. Ductless refrigerant lines, refrigerant lines cannot extend longer than eighty two feet per air handler.
So does the house, the house doesn't currently have air conditioning, central air, right?
It, it does on the other side because we, we needed three, well, we need three units. We have two. They've been installed in, in backyards and so one side of a house is very pleasantly cool and the other half is, is not so cool at the moment.
I guess I'm, I'm a little confused.
Maybe I can clarify it, Diane. The, he has three ductless units. He doesn't have central air and a ductless, all ductless. So one of them has a limitation on the run refrigeration.
So he does not have a duct, like central air, each room having its.
What, what I heard him say at the beginning of his presentation is he has three ductless units, but this one, because of the manufacturing limitation, can't, just doesn't go anywhere else. To service the unit it has to service.
If you look at, if you look at his photo one, you see the table. There's a ductless unit under the window on the house. That's one of the one, so I assume it's gonna be similar to that. That was a question, sorry. I assume it'll be similar to that, what you put in the corner where you're anticipating to put the third unit. Is that correct?
Yeah, which, which photo are you looking at?
I was looking at photo number one. It looked like the outside patio table.
Are there umbrellas in the photo?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it would be, sorry Pete, let me get to that. Yes, there's a unit behind the.
Oh, sorry, it's actually, I don't know, it's actually photo six. DOE photo oh six, sorry about that.
Yeah, the one we're looking at is picture of our backyard. There are, there's a blue umbrella to the left and a red one in the middle, which obscures, but not completely, the, the condenser unit that, that we have there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, so these are basically, Diana, another word for them is a mini split, mini split system. And they're not like your typical central air with the huge unit that sits on the floor. And they're not like your typical central air with the huge, um, unit that sits on the floor outside.
So it would look similar to the one we were just referring to.
It would, uh, but it would be lower. Uh, but this one is, uh, placed, um, on, on a stand. Um, in the interest of aesthetics, the, the, the one we're seeking a variance for would be, uh, placed on the ground and therefore would be no higher than 42 inches.
I would be, I think that you might find that it will be higher than 42 inches because with those units, there's, depending on what kind you're getting, there's a snow question. So they can't be obscured with snow, um, for the, if you decide to use the heat in the summer. So I think I'd be a little careful with saying it will not be higher than 42 inches because whatever we do approve, I certainly wouldn't want to see you have to come back here if it tends to be a little higher than that.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification. And let, let me read what I said and I, and I think, yes, I, I don't think I've necessarily reflected it exactly. Uh, what's written here by the installer is, this is the unit that we are going to sit directly on a pad with no stand. Uh, the one we're looking at in the picture is on a stand. Um, to keep below the dining room window though, is the final piece. So it would, uh, that's as high as it would go is, um, it, it would be below the level of the dining.
Below the height of the dining room window. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. But, you know, thank you for that clarification, yeah.
All right, so you, um, you'd be okay with a stipulation that if this were approved, you would stay at that height and that it would be screened in somewhat with some shrubbery?
Yes, although the, the 42 inches, yes, I mean, it may go a little bit above that to, um, to the point, the board members.
We could, we could say approximately 42 inches in height, but no higher than the lower part of the dining room window.
Correct. Yes.
And the board in the past has stipulated boxwoods, um, usually at, uh, two and a half to three foot height. At planting, that's what you've done in other resolutions for the screening. If that's what you wanted to do, we can specify that too.
Can we, can we say screening that will cover the whole? If it's 42 inches, it goes up to 42 inches?
At planting?
Well, you can put a slow growing boxwood. It takes 10 years before it'll get up to 42 inches. I mean, I, the whole point is, you don't want to see it from the street.
Right.
So anything that cover it so you can't see from the street. For me, actually, being a boxwood or, I, I just want, from personally, I just don't want to see it from the street. It is fairly close to the, to that side of the street. And it's high up because there is that wall, so it is at eye level. So I would like ever the height is of the unit, like whatever greenery, so you can't see it from.
Boxwood planting should be at a height to be above that of the air conditioning unit.
Yeah.
We're, we're absolutely aligned with that. We don't really want to see it either.
Yeah, no, I, I'm sure you don't. So that's all, as long, because it's up at a higher level from the sidewalk because of that, the, the wall on that side.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah.
So whatever is going to block it completely.
Yes, agree.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would just make one suggestion. Make sure you manufacture and don't plant too close to the unit. You gotta get air in and out of it to be, you know, functional. That, just follow the manufacturer's distance from the deck.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Before we open it up to the public, are there any other questions by board members? There being none. Uh, Dylan, we could open it up now for any members of the public who have questions. If you're listening in, you have a question here, raise your hand virtually or send in the chat. We'll unmute you.
I'm not showing any.
Okay. Same with comments? Anyone? Go to a second here. Doubtful, but never know. All right, so we will now, listen, you know, the applicant has anything else that they want to say. You're welcome to make a closing statement.
Um, no, just thanks again for, uh, for hearing our case.
Yes.
All right, good hearing. Now, all right, thank you. Uh, the hearing is closed, so we will open it up for board member deliberations and/or a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve as presented with the restriction, as we discussed earlier about the bushes being same height, uh, the top height of the condenser unit. They are, yeah, due to the house.
The unit also being no higher than, well, probably, Bruce said approximately 42 inches, but no higher than the bottom of the dining room?
Yes.
I would say the, the, the current height of the dining room window.
Yep.
Yes, so it should say below the window.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Matthew?
Um, Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negritz?
Yes.
Diana Ruhl?
Yes.
John Vipitro?
Yes.
Isaac Lebo?
Yes.
Matthew Bandell?
Yes.
Chairman Allegra?
Yes, you are approved. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, good night. Take care.
Good night. Thank you. Stay safe.
Okay, so let's keep moving. Um, all right, we'll continue with the business. Moving on to the matter of Mohammed Youssef, an application to construct a second story addition, which will result in a front yard setback on Pershing Avenue of 36 feet where 40 is required and a rear yard setback of 18.7 feet where 30 feet is required at 6 Pershing Avenue, block 3504, lot 21, in an R2 zone. I see Mr. Youssef is logged in. Mr. Youssef, can you hear us?
He's not here.
All right, very good. Is there anyone else who's going to be testifying?
No.
This evening? Okay, so it's just you?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we'll get sworn in then.
Mr. Youssef, you raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, uh, we live in this house since, may I speak?
Yes, please. Yeah, please.
Uh, we live in this house since, uh, June of 19, uh, oh, sorry, 2018. And we planned to side the house, uh, but immediately we, uh, found out that the house had a huge problem with closet space. We have three bedrooms, um, on the top floor with only a two foot closet in each room, hardly enough to accommodate three. So we searched and we hired a few, um, construction, um, companies and they suggested that we do enclose on top of the garage, um, and do some kind of a walking closet using the existing, um, door of the closet in the master bedroom as an entrance to that, uh, walking closet. The walking closet really does not extend beyond, uh, the existing house line. So, and if you picture with me, uh, the, this, the garage is maybe 25, 20 feet, or 25, I think, feet deep. And the room on top of that garage is recessed about eight feet. Okay, uh, so what we plan, uh, we hope to do, literally, is just build two walls. One in, in the front and one on the side of the house to enclose that pocket of eight by 12 to do a walk-in closet. Um, and, and, um, I think when I sent the survey to some of the neighbors, uh, at least three came forward to, because they were confused. They thought we are building a whole second floor and they didn't see where and how. And, uh, and, and I think, I believe I related that to Jane. But what we are really doing is just walking closet, eight by 12, uh, without compromising the integrity of the house on, and, and, and just like the previous, um, of case, I can assure you, it would, it would, it would not do anything but enhance the value of this house and the value of the property around. We are not taking anything from the, uh, lines of the house itself. We are not coming out or in just enclosing that pocket. If you look at, I don't know if the, my pictures are numbered as I sent them. So if you look at a picture I sent, uh, and I think it's, it's named IMG 6881. Is that the number you have too, or did you number differently?
So, if you're talking about the name of the file?
Yes.
Yeah, my, my name, my file is called something different. But I am looking at, Bruce, you have, uh, you have the pictures that were sent in?
Yes.
Eight pictures, right, Mr. Youssef?
Pardon me?
There's eight photos?
Yes, yes, it's, uh, I, I don't know if you can see if my camera is working and I will be able to point at it. Go on. This one.
No, we can't, we can't, we own the video.
Okay, so it's one of the pictures, uh, actually, two of the pictures will clearly show you the intention and the plan and, as well as the architect plan. Um, that it's only the, the garage, like I said, i- it's built on the borderline of the building. Uh, like, say, one third on the right side exists the garage and on top of it, there is a bedroom. And the bedroom is recessed eight feet in, on top of the, of that garage. So what we planning or hoping to do is just to build a wall on, you know, on the borderline of the front and then another one on the side of the house to, to close that eight by 12 section to, again, to turn into, um, a closet, a walk-in closet. I'm confusing you, right? It's, I'm confused.
No, 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 I, I'm actually looking at the picture you sent there. It makes perfect sense to me. The, um, so the, the, the house is currently brick and it looks like, is that cedar shake or is it wood siding?
Yes.
So what is your plan for the exterior materials used on the, on the proposed addition?
We're gonna do a whole new siding. We're gonna re-site the entire top. We're gonna keep the brick looking. We're gonna keep the tutor looking, but we're gonna do a whole new siding all around the house. And again, unfortunately, uh, this was our project number one when we moved in. But when we found out that this, this, uh, problem exists and we hoped that it will, we thought it would be done sooner through that delay, the siding of the house. Um, and here we are almost two years after and we're still in, in, in the, in the hope that we can get this done so we can, you know, re-site the entire house.
You've got it. Are there, uh, let's go around. Isaac Lebo, any questions?
No questions.
No questions? Um, who's, uh, Greg Brown, questions? Uh, no, no questions. Diana Ruhl?
Yes, I have a question. Um, or, no. Well, have you thought about putting a window in the front of the house in that closet, even if it's a fake window?
I know, yes. We're going to move that window as a facade, just to keep the look.
Yes, because if not, you've got, because it's not in your plan when I was looking.
I know, I know. This was not maybe added, but thought of. You know, actually, my wife suggested maybe we should and, 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 you know, I, I said, you know what?
I like her.
Okay. We, we decided, you know what, we, we can, we can put a, a window in the front as a facade. I mean, my problem with that was, oh, it's not going to be, um, um, a, a, a space that we can use for, 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 you know, as, as, as part of the closet. But we, you know, we said, you know what, we can just, you know, just make it a facade window.
Yeah, because you need it from, for the aesthetic quality of it.
Okay, you got it.
I'm all done.
All right, good. Dan, Dan Promen? Questions?
Ask me, come on.
No, no questions.
Dan, good. Uh, Matthew Bandell, questions?
Come on, Gary.
Sorry, was that now?
No, I, I have no questions.
Sorry. Uh, Gary, Gary Negritz?
No.
Wow. What an honor.
He was ready for you, Gary. Uh, okay, um, Mr. Vipitro, John Vipitro, any questions?
Just a little clarification on the siding for the second floor. Would you clarify cedar shake or what you appear to show on your plan here? Your page two of two clapboard siding, uh, be a little more specific. What are you going to do?
Uh, honestly.
Or something different?
No, honestly, we're gonna explore, um, a, a high quality vinyl siding all around except the front.
Okay, I understand that. And, and also on Diane's question about a window for that room, I would say that would, uh, looks like it needs something there. It's just a large open space. Maybe you could get creative and put some kind of a stained glass window in there.
Um, hey, okay.
I mean, I'm not recommending.
Get more expensive, please.
Hold on a second. Can I just, you said siding all around except the front? You're leaving the brick all around the bottom, right?
Oh, the bottom, yes, we're not touching the bottom. The bottom, it, it's, I mean, the, the picture really does not do it any justice. The bottom of the house is beautiful. It's beautiful. It's beautiful. It's like a few farmers put this, uh, on the bottom. It's so uneven. It's so cute. It's like, you know, like if I, i- i- if I did that myself, that's how it would look. I would not.
So, but you're leaving the brick along the bottom?
Absolutely. Not touching it.
All right.
Just the, 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 the shingles all around except for the front.
So, I'm sorry, so what, what are you gonna do with the front, above the brick?
The front, we're gonna re, um, whatever you call it, repair it, fix it, replace rotten wood, uh, replace the mold, whatever it takes and, and the stucco.
So why wouldn't you put the same material all around?
On the front? Oh, the stucco, uh, you mean, uh, put vinyl on the front?
So what's on the side?
The side is cedar shingle.
So why don't you just continue cedar shingle all around?
One, honestly, it would be very expensive. Two, um, it will be very tough to maintain. You know, my neighbor has to paint his house almost every five years and he said it cost him somewhere between 10 to $15,000 to do. Uh, when you can, we, we, we looked at, uh, vinyl siding that looks exactly like shingles.
Yeah, no, so I'm saying it may be better if you do the whole thing the same.
Because we want to keep the tutor integrity of the house. So the front, we're gonna try to maybe like use, uh, maybe a little bit more high-tech material of, to, to, uh, to, to, to fix. But I would like to keep the look of the house, you know, that side, the, the tutor look, the two-tone and the, um, and, and, and we, you know, we actually took some, uh, recommendation and took some estimates for people to, you know, to, to do exactly that.
Okay.
Either, but, you know.
To look similar?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You are very welcome.
Okay, Dylan, now is the time for any members of the public who have any questions for Mr. Youssef? Raise your hand virtually, send in the chat. Let us know.
I'm sorry, no chats, no hand raising and nobody's dialed in.
I'm showing no chats, no hand raising, and nobody's dialed in.
Okay, so we'll just, for formality's sake, ask anyone if they have any comments. Now is the time, raise your hand. Chat, nothing?
No, I'm not showing anything. I think less people are in our list, two applicants.
Two applicants, okay. So, Mr. Youssef, now is the time for just a closing statement, you don't, not required, optional, and then we'll close the hearing and deliberate and vote.
No, I, I just thank you for your time and for putting me on the calendar today.
All right, very good, you're welcome. So the hearing is now closed, we'll now entertain any board member deliberation, comment, and/or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the provision that the street faces of the addition contain a window carry forward to the side look.
Very good, I'll give a second.
Second?
Okay, Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
Diana Rule?
Yes.
Jonathan Pepietro?
Yes.
Isaac Lebo?
Yes.
Matthew Bandell?
Yes.
Chairman Allegra?
Yes. So Youssef, you were approved, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, stay well, stay safe.
Yes, thank you.
Good luck.
All right, so we're gonna move on now, continue new business. Some matter of Christopher Aleppa, an application to permit the construction of a second-floor dormer on the rear slope of the existing roof, which will result in a front yard setback of forty-point-five feet, or fifty-two-point-five feet is required, a rear yard setback of twenty-five feet, where thirty feet is required at 322 Stillwell Place, block 4102, lot eight, in an R2 zone. And who do we have this evening? Mr. Aleppa, you on?
I'm on, can you hear me?
So, it seems like you're on both the computer and the phone?
I just hung up.
All right, so you're just on the computer, I could, because we had that feedback. Is there anyone else that's gonna be testifying this evening?
Yes, I, I have Vince Choffey, he's the architect. And I have the contractor here, Anthony Aludo, if there's questions about the scope of, of the project.
All right, so we're just gonna have to go, anybody sworn in?
If each of you would raise your right hand, please.
Can you guys see me or, or no? No, okay. But you can hear me, okay.
We can hear you.
Okay.
Raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, be the truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
One at a time, give us your name and your address.
Christopher J. Aleppa, 322 Stillwell Place in Ridgewood.
Thank you, next.
Anthony Aludo, 96 Washington Avenue, Westwood, New Jersey.
Next.
Anthony's.
Vince, you got, they're looking for you to be sworn in, Vince.
No, Anthony.
Oh, Anthony Aludo, 96 Washington Avenue, Westwood, New Jersey.
That one's muted.
We're having some trouble with, I think, Mr. Aludo's audio.
Can you guys hear me now?
Oh, he's dialed in twice.
So, Mr. Aludo, if you are in, on the phone and via the computer, you're gonna need to log off of one of them.
Yeah, I just, I moved away, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, my name is Anthony Aludo, 96 Washington Avenue, Westwood, New Jersey.
All right, so I think Mr. Wicker's gonna qualify any experts?
Yes, have the architect give us their qualifications, the background?
I don't hear Vince. He just, he's having microphone trouble, he's gonna use the, he's gonna call in on the phone right now. Sorry. My apologies, guys.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah, I had to dial in on the phone, I had some microphone issues.
Mr. Siop, Siop, could you give us your professional educational background in connection with your field of architecture?
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Environmental Design degree from Miami University in Ohio, a Master's of Architecture degree in Miami University in Ohio, both in the late seventies, licensed in the states of New York, New Jersey, and NCARB. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey since nineteen eighty-three.
And in the course of the work that you do, you've been qualified as an expert witness before land use boards?
Yes, many times.
And your architectural licenses are in effect, correct?
Correct.
If there's any questions by board members or members of the public in connection with Siop's credentials, if there being none, he can testify and render an opinion in that field. Any questions? He's so qualified, let's proceed.
So, would you like me to start talking?
Okay.
Okay, so, once again, I'm Chris Aleppa. So, we purchased 322 Stillwell Place, it's on Stillwell, it's on Stillwell Place, which is a very narrow road. Speaking to Leslie years ago, and this is the house that we purchased, it used to be a two-way road, which I find hard to believe since it is so narrow. But it's one-way road now, we're trying to keep the house essentially looking the same. We don't wanna have this big McMansion-type house, we wanna have something that fits into the community, in the neighborhood. So, in doing that, we found the house, we submitted plans, essentially just to do more of a gut inside, and work with the upstairs living space, the attic, which was being used as a bedroom upstairs, but to walk up the stairs was very even difficult, you know, the headroom wasn't there. So what we wanted to do was to do a, a small addition, or not, a dormer, keeping the four existing walls just the way they were, not going outside of the four walls, and from there, use the dormer and then have a living space that was accessible or, or able to work with. As far as the setbacks, as far as the, where we got caught up with, and we, we didn't know we were gonna have an issue when we submitted, I would like to leave that to Vince Choffey, since he has all knowledge in that, he's been talking to the building department. If that's all right, would, was it okay to turn that over to him at this time?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. It's, it's a very strange property, in fact, in that the, the front yard set, required front yard setback and required rear side, rear yard setback actually overlap. So we have zero, zero space to build. The entire house is, is non-conforming to the zone. When we started to work on the house, we were trying to work within the space that we had, you know, because we wanted to keep it to a, you know, modest renovation. And it turned out that the upstairs, although finished and open as living space, really was, it didn't meet code in any, any, any fashion. It was one big open room, and we wanted to create two bedrooms up there, and when we did that, we lost its grandfather status. We had no way to get egress windows in, the stair was too steep, the headroom clearance on the stair was inadequate. So, I was able to design the house so that I would not, I would not interfere with the existing ridge line, so the house is not created at any new height. The dormer is all within the rear slope setback, or the rear slope of the roof, and just sort of works itself in, gives us enough room to, to get two bedrooms and straighten out the stair problems, and, and, you know, get really what we wanna get out of the house. From the front, you wouldn't know we were doing any work at all. From the rear, you'll see, you know, very low-profile dormer that fits nicely into the roof, we think. I don't, I think that basically describes what we're trying to do.
Correct to say that the dormer that you're proposing does not go outside the footprint of the existing dwelling unit?
That is correct, everything is within the existing footprint. Actually, Vince, we're staying in a foot, I believe, too, we're coming in a little bit off it. Uh, yeah, we are, we're not going out to the edge of the back wall.
Siding on the dormer going to match the existing siding?
Yes.
Okay, we'll just go around, Isaac Lebo, do you have any questions?
I noticed that the properties get quite a few trees. I noticed there was some work done, removing branches on some of the large trees. Are you guys gonna be removing any of the large vegetation to add the dormer?
I could bear, I could barely hear the question, did you say, ask if we were gonna put vegetation in to hide the dormer?
No, no, I was asking, I noticed that you, can you hear me any better?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear? Yeah, it's very hard to hear Isaac, I can hear him now, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
My question was pertaining to existing vegetation, mainly the, the large trees that you have behind the house. Are you having to remove any of the trees to add this?
No, no, we, we had to trim up a couple of lower limbs that were dead. And there was another tree, but not right in the back, that was removed, that was rotten, been dead probably seven years. Nothing stays, the big massive trees will be there, you won't know that anything's been removed except for the lower limb.
Okay, and I can't recall, what is directly behind, because I don't see it on the pictures here, what's directly behind the house?
As far as, so there's, that, those houses are the ones that are on Maple Avenue. So I think it's a couple Ridgewood, and then on the other side are a couple Glen Rock houses.
Okay. All right, I don't have any additional questions at this time.
All right, thank you, Gary Negrits, any questions?
No.
Greg Brown? No, no questions. Okay, Diana Rule?
No questions.
Dan Pearlman?
No questions, thank you.
Matthew Bandell?
No questions, thank you.
And Jonathan Pepietro?
No questions, thank you, well-presented.
Okay, so now we're gonna open it up to members of the public. If there's anyone out there listening who has a question, the applicant or the architect, now is the time, please virtually raise your hand, send in the chat, let us know you wanna speak, we will unmute you. Dylan, anyone?
I'm not showing anybody.
All right, anyone with questions, same thing, virtually raise your hand, send us a chat, let us know you wanna be heard. No one?
No.
Okay, so we'll turn it back to the applicant. Now is the time for any additional testimony, or if you're done presenting your application, you can make a closing statement, and then we'll close the hearing.
I don't have anything to say, except I think that it, it's a nice addition with everything being updated and re-done, it fits into the community, fits into the street, nothing that's overbearing. And as far as an addition goes, or any kind of remodeling, it, it's really, really nice. I don't have anything else, I don't know if Anthony, if you had something to say?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, we will close the, the hearing now, and open it up to board members to comment, deliberate, or move, make a motion.
I think I'm motion to approve, given the existing location of the property, and that it does not exacerbate any conditions.
So that was Isaac?
Okay.
Isaac seconded.
All right, Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
Diana Rule?
Yes.
Jonathan Pepietro?
Yes.
Isaac Lebo?
Yes.
Matthew Bandell?
Yes.
Chairman Allegra?
Yes. All right, Mr. Aleppa, you're approved, good luck with your renovation.
Thank you, guys, thank you very much, here, and Jane, thank you for putting up with my stress. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye-bye.
All right, so, we can give everyone just a five-minute bio, or I'm gonna go get another thing of water, break, and then we'll resume with the last application of the evening, which is the watered matter. I might as well mute.
Intermission?
Hey, Sergio. Just want to let you know, I only have 3% on my iPad. If I die, I'll come back on another computer, but I'm charging, but it keeps going down even with the charger on. So.
All right. Do you have any?
That's, that's the
I'm in a somewhat similar situation, but I probably have an hour, so.
Oh, no, I've got 3%.
Oh, my goodness.
So I'm assuming if I stop video, it'd be better. I wouldn't lose it as quickly.
Yeah, has to be. I just checked, I'm at 48% on my phone, so that's good.
I'll have to switch. So if I go, I'm gonna have to rejoin.
Okay.
Sergio, before we get going, I'm having some difficulty hearing Isaac. He sounds very muted. Everybody else is very clear, but Isaac, I'm very muted, very low.
Yeah, that's a fair point. Isaac, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, so you're definitely, you're definitely light. So if you could speak like when you're going to speak, get close to the whatever microphone you have.
Is it better when I'm like this?
You can go to settings and turn up the volume on the mic.
Okay.
What I do is I call in. Just, I use my headset and I call in, but that's optional, obviously. Wow, that is some, Greg, that looks amazing.
Nice.
Wish I was there.
Yeah, you guys are all welcome. You can all come up if you want.
Why he's at this meeting, I have no idea.
And, yeah, Greg, that's where we have, that's where we have alternates and multiple, you know, a large enough board.
Oh, come on.
Take your title to a vacation. You can have a vacation.
I needed a little break from the kids, and it's been good.
Although it is my, although I'm getting the stink eye, it's my son's birthday and I'm down here instead of there with him, but it happens.
Better, Sergio.
I know, I'm terrible. So Diane, I know you, we can't see you because of your battery issue. Dan Pearlman, are you, are you in front of the computer yet? All right, so he may need another minute.
I'm here.
Yep, gotcha. All right, we'll get started soon with Dan. Yeah, is that you?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were waiting for me.
Just making sure. There you are, I take it. So we will start it on the last matter of the evening. This is Gregory and Anastasia Warden. An application to permit the construction of an in-ground swimming pool with spa, patio and barbecue area within the front yard setback, which is not permitted and which will result in a front yard setback of 11 feet to the pool, 14 feet to the patio, 23 feet to the pool equipment, where 40 feet is required, and a fence wall height which exceeds what is permitted at 320 Fairway Road, block 3604 lot 1 in an R1 zone. Okay, so who do we have this evening?
Everybody else has to come on.
All right, so we got Mr. Rutherford, I see.
It's everyone.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Rutherford?
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. I assume you can all hear me. Yes, I hope, yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. I'm accompanied this evening, virtually, I guess, by my clients Gregory and Anastasia Warden. Lenny Di Tomaso, their landscape architect, he's actually physically with them at the moment. And Joseph Burgess, our professional planner. So I just want to make sure that they have all been unmuted and are part of our
I assume I am.
Mr. Burgess is here.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, and I believe Mr. and Mrs. Warden and Mr. Di Tomaso, you were there as well?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can. I can. Mr. Chairman, can the board hear eyewitnesses?
I could, I could hear everyone. So why don't we just get everyone sworn in and move forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Warden, Mr. Di Tomaso and Mr. Burgess. If you would raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, each of you, starting with Mr. and Mrs. Warden, give your full name and address.
Anastasia Warden, 320 Fairway Road, Ridgewood.
Gregory Warden, 320 Fairway Road, Ridgewood. Lenny Di Tomaso, 30 Franklin Ave, Oakland.
And Joe Burgess, 41 Lucas Lane in Saddle River.
Thank you. Mr. Rutherford, please proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief with the opening statement. I realize that the hour is late and the virtual process has significant constraints, but what we are dealing with here is an undersized lot for the R2 zone. It has an irregular shape and it is a corner lot to boot, which means it has to have two front yard setbacks. The property has been before the board previously. I attached to my application copies of resolutions adopted by the board, I think 14 and 16 years ago, where the board acknowledged the constraints of the property. And as Mr. Allegra just indicated, we are looking to install a swimming pool and spa and related patio and barbecue area in the rear of the property. You'll see, and Mr. Di Tomaso will explain to you, because of the undersized nature of the property and its shape, property gets progressively narrower as it proceeds to the south. We simply cannot comply with the required setback, which is 40 feet from Northern Parkway. So we're really here for, for one variance, in a sense, in that the, there are encroachments of the pool and related amenities into the front yard setback. We've kind of set forth those out, and Mr. Di Tomaso and his plan is set those out for you, just so you know kind of what elements they are, the pool itself, you know, the pool equipment, the patio, et cetera, so you kind of get an idea. But it's basically a single variance. It's the front yard setback variance. The second variance that was referred to has to do with the pool. As you all know, we are required to comply with state standards with respect to fencing. There's an existing fence atop a retaining wall, and as you are well aware, the combined, the height of that structure for zoning purposes is the combination of the wall and the fence. So to the extent that the replacement of that existing fence requires variance relief, we see as well. When the application was originally filed, we sought, we sought two very minor coverage type variances. Since the filing of the application and the preparation of the plan that you have in front of you, those variances were eliminated. And you'll see in the upper left portion of Mr. Di Tomaso's plan, he has provided a very detailed coverage analysis and calculation to demonstrate that we meet all of the coverage provisions of the ordinance, which I would submit is a bit unusual. The proposed amenities and Mr. Di Tomaso will tell you this are not unusual. The pool is not large. It's only 530 square feet, where 800 square feet is, is very common. So we think really we are here because of factors relating to the property as opposed to the improvements that are planned. I'm sure the board is familiar with the Northern Parkway roadway. There are houses to the east and the south. We comply with all of those setback requirements. Where we encroach is on the Northern Parkway side, and as you all know, on the other side of Northern Parkway is the Veterans Field and related parking area. Mr. Di Tomaso is going to show you an exhibit that shows the extensive landscaping that's proposed that will effectively totally screen the installation from the view of the street, which works to the advantage and the benefit of my clients as well as passersby. And I mentioned a moment ago, the, the replacement of the existing fence. So we have testimony from Mr. Di Tomaso and Mr. Burgess. We may have some very brief testimony from Mr. Warden with respect to a few photographs that he took relating to a very similar installation, that is a pool in the rear yard of a home on a corner lot, actually at the corner of Colonial Road and Collingwood Place, which is really, literally just around the corner. So he has some pictures that he will deal with that. So I'd like to proceed, Mr. Chairman, if you please, with the testimony of Mr. Di Tomaso. And as he gets ready, he will be referring to a two-page plan that he has prepared. For the record, it's entitled Landscape Plan. The original preparation date was August 5th, 2019. The most recent revision date was March 10th, 2020. And attached to that is a drainage plan, again, original preparation date, August 5th, 2019, last revised November 15th, 2019. We're not going to spend a lot of time on the drainage. We just wanted to, the board, to know that attention has been paid to that detail of this plan. We certainly expect that if the board were to act favorably upon our application, one of the conditions would be compliance with all the stormwater management regulations of the Village of Ridgewood. So with that having been said, and again, to streamline things a bit, Mr. Whitaker, I believe Mr. Di Tomaso has appeared before this board on a number of prior occasions, has been qualified as an expert in the field of landscape architecture, and I would offer him again in that discipline.
Yes, Mr. Di Tomaso has been qualified as an expert witness in the field of landscape development and architectural elements. Unless there's any questions by board members or members of the public, he can be so qualified this evening. There's being no questions, let's proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. I've instructed my witnesses that they will proceed in narrative fashion this evening. I may have a few questions when they're done. But in order to kind of move things forward, they're just going to proceed and start telling you about the project. So Mr. Di Tomaso, please proceed with your testimony.
Okay, thank you. All right, so back in last August, when the Wardens called me, they asked me to develop a backyard use space for them, and they wanted it to include a pool, barbecue areas and, and some other nice elements. We walked around for about five minutes and I told them, you know, you have two front yards. And they're like, what is two front, what do you mean I have two front yards? I have a backyard. So I explained to them that whole situation. They wanted to proceed with including a pool in their design. So in that content, I located a pool, trying to locate it behind the back backyard, if you want to call it, portion of the house. Not on, it's very difficult to put it on the Northern Parkway side to begin with. The Northern Parkway side right now exists with existing patios. It has a existing masonry barbecue, which does not comply. It's inside the setback. And we removed all of that and got everything to comply with building coverage, impervious coverage. I located a pool for them, a small pool, as Mr. Rutherford said, 530 square feet. The pool, it's like, I think, 36 feet long. And yep, 36, and the widest point is about 21 feet. So if anyone that has a pool knows that this is kind of a small pool, but it's a tight space. But I did give them a pool. It's completely screened from the street. If anyone visited the site, you could see that the street is about eight feet below the existing lawn area, so it's, and there's 25-foot evergreens there now and plenty of vegetation already. But we are increasing the amount of vegetation to further screen this project from the street. There's presently a set of steps going down to the street with a gate from their backyard heading toward Northern Parkway. That's going to be removed. We're going to close that wall and create a lawn space on that side. No more pervious, no more patios on that side, just strictly grass over there. Pool equipment, you know, we're going for a variance for the setback on that. A heater has to be six feet from a window. It was very difficult to locate this heater in any other spot. I tried everywhere on this site to, to locate this without going outside of building setbacks and putting it near windows. So that's why I located it where it is. And we're going to screen that out. Could also notice on my plan, there's an outdoor kitchen type of setup, a little bar that's inside the setbacks. They have an existing raised patio right now. And after I designed the outdoor kitchen they wanted, it brought us over on building coverage. So we made the decision to remove this raised patio that's over eight inches above grade to comply so that we can, can indeed install this bar, outdoor kitchen type of space for them. I don't know what else to say. There's a small patio back there. Fence, fence details on there. The fence is four and a half feet high. It's going to be pool compliant. It's going to be on top of the wall, just as the existing fences now. I think that's about it for me.
And just a couple of questions, Mr. Di Tomaso, so that we're clear. Your plan, and I'm referring to the landscape plan or the, the plan designated as that landscape plan, shows the edge of the property, and that's that very heavy dashed line, correct? And then you also show in the lighter line where the words Northern Parkway, that's the edge of the pavement of Northern Parkway. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So all of your setbacks, and you've just tried, as I indicated in my opening, you've tried to do a set of representative setbacks, if you will, for the pool and, and the related structures and equipment to give some idea of, you know, how far these are setback from the road. But the roadway is quite a bit further off of the property line. Isn't that correct?
Yes, in some areas, 12, 13 feet.
Okay, for example, in the, about halfway down the Northern Parkway elevation, it shows two existing oaks. That, that's probably the, the point where the, the pavement of Northern Parkway that's farthest from the property line. Is that right?
Correct, about 14 feet there.
Okay, and just to orient the board, you'll see those steps that are a little bit further to the south of those trees. It says remove existing steps and stepping stones. That's like a little stairway that goes down into the right-of-way right now. That's going to come out. Correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. And you also, just to point out to the board, I'm sure they've seen it, but in a dotted line, you've shown the front side, the front setback on Fairway Road and Northern Parkway, and then the side on the east and the rear yard setback on the south. That's kind of a relatively small triangular area, correct?
Yes, it is.
And actually was the source of variance relief granted by this board a number of years ago to permit some expansions to the home. You testified earlier that the side yard setback for all of these improvements, and by that, the side yard being the easterly portion of the property, everything complies with the required side yard setback in that particular location, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Barbecue, everything.
Yes.
And we also comply to the rear yard setback as well for all of the improvements that we're proposing.
Yes.
Okay, what's located between the pool and the southerly property line? What, what's in that area?
Between, well, the driveway to the house, the garage is there. There's the driveway. And between the pool and there's a wall with the existing retaining wall with vegetation on top.
How high is that? How high is that wall approximately?
Okay, so the wall, it's, it's, it meets grade about where the entrance is up by the garage. And then down by the street, it's about three and a half feet high to the top of the wall. Then the wall stays consistently about three foot nine, three foot 10 feet high all the way to Fairway Road. Then there's a double tier. to Fairway Road. Then there's a double tier on the corner of Fairway.
Okay.
Then the property slopes from the wall to Northern Parkway. Giving us about an eight-foot elevation grade from Northern Parkway to the top of the wall. Seven feet, six, 10, some areas, it varies.
Okay, and there's, you testified earlier that there's already a fence on top of that retaining wall approximately four feet in height.
Correct, but that fence does not meet pool code, so we have to change it.
Okay, and the pool code, you've shown a detail for the fence that we're proposing in the upper central portion of your plan.
Yes.
That's a compliant, for all intents and purposes, four-foot-high compliant pool fence.
It's four and a half feet high, and actually, our fence guy showed that fence to Paula, and she said that fence complies, yes.
Okay. All right, and then I'd like you to talk just a little bit more about the land, and I think you have a rendering, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if the board is, has been in the practice of offering the share screen feature, but Mr. De Tomaso has a colored rendering of the plan that you have in front of it, identical to what you have in front of you. It's just a colored rendering that might be helpful to the board. If we're able to do that, we are prepared to put that up. If not, I'll have Mr. De Tomaso just testify to it.
You can put it up.
I think, but I think we have it.
There we go.
Yeah, we, we have this.
Oh, you do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, there's every, well, you can show it anyway, but yeah, we have this.
I appreciate that. Keeping track of plans and exhibits, and whether they're posted or not, is a little bit challenging these days. Okay, Mr. De, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. De Tomaso, why don't you just walk the board quickly through what's there? You've made an attempt here to show what's there, correct? And what's also proposed, so maybe-
On the west side where Northern Parkway is, you can see the existing evergreens on the corner there. There's one, two, three, there's six. One, two, three, five large spruces. There's oaks. Underneath that, underneath those trees are some larger large vegetation, like six to seven foot high, like by burnhams and nice vegetation coming up. And then you could see some rows. I'm proposing to add, like arborvitae's and plant material to further screen that off. So the view from Northern Parkway is completely blocked. On the east side, you could see a row of evergreens like arborvitae. I have to use tall skinny plants because there's just no room for wide plants to grow here. So I'm screening the property, and there's a lot of vegetation on that side too, on the neighbor's side. But we've increased, we've added some more plant material there. And same thing with the pool equipment, plant around the pool equipment to screen that from inside, and I really don't think anyone's going to see it from the street.
And that's the function of the existing landscaping, the proposed landscaping, the difference in elevation between the property and the roadway of Northern Parkway, and also, to a certain extent, the distance between the property line and the edge of the pavement.
Yep, correct.
Okay, and that's obviously been done not only for, to shield it from the view of passersby, but also to give our clients a degree of privacy and enjoyment for this area in the back of their house.
Correct.
And you testified that, I think along the perimeter at least, of the pool area in Northern Parkway and the inside of the fence surrounding the pool and its southwesterly corner, those are evergreens, and along the easterly property line are evergreens. What are other, there are some other representative plantings on there?
In front of the evergreens would be some decorative plant material, flowering shrubs, perennials, that would be enjoyable from the pool area.
And so, given the choice of the plantings, the pool is really going to be effectively screened from view 365 days a year, correct? It might be affected by seasonal leaves come off in the fall and come back in the spring.
That is correct. It'll be screened all year.
And you mentioned this briefly, but in my opening statement, I I mentioned that a 530-square-foot pool is, you know, on the smaller side, and you do a lot of these, I know. What do you commonly see for a pool size in a residential situation?
Like you said earlier, 800 square feet, 20 by 40, even free forms, 44 feet long, you know, 24 feet wide. So it's small, but it's a small piece of property. So we had to design it to to fit and to work with this piece of property.
Okay. And just to confirm, we, I don't think we necessarily, we're certainly not going to go through all the coverage numbers. There's they're mind-boggling up there, but there's a lot of numbers, and just to confirm what I said in my opening, we comply with all the coverage requirements of the ordinance, correct?
Yes.
And you've given drainage some thought and are satisfied that if the board were to act favorably upon our application, we can indeed comply with all of the requirements of the Village Engineering Department with respect to stormwater management.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I would have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Great. Now we'll open it up for questions. Gary Negrits? Some questions?
No question.
Hang on here, let me see if I could. Jonathan Pietro, any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, no questions. It's a very nice plan, and I appreciate all the landscaping work in addition to the fitting everything onto the property.
Very good. Isaac Lebo, any questions?
No questions.
And Greg Brown?
Just one question. When you were looking at the, like, where to sort of place the pool, did you look at anything to sort of place it, you know, more of it inside that 40-foot line? Because the majority of the pool is outside.
I did.
You know, there's maybe three feet of it that's inside, which would be 30-some odd of it.
There's access point, there's a gate, an access point to get to the garage. So I did not want to block that. I'm actually encroaching it a little bit now. If you can see where the gate is, can you see where this, yep, so if I kicked it further down, I think they'd have to really walk around the pool more to get to their cars. And that was the reason I put it where it is.
Hey, thanks. Matthew Bendel?
No, I have the same question as Greg, but I understand the answer.
Okay. Dan Arul?
Yeah, I've got two questions. The fence. Is it going to sit right on top of the wall?
No, it's going to be in concrete footings right behind the wall.
Okay, I just, and Jane, maybe, I thought it had to be a certain number of feet back from the wall. If I remember the code, we've had this issue before. You can't put a fence right on top of a wall. It has to be set back.
Well, and that's why they're seeking variance relief.
No, no, I know, but but that's not what the relief is for. The relief is for the height of it's, right now, it shows like it's right on top of the wall.
No, it's setback off the wall. It's not in the concrete.
But it's the combination of the wall.
It would destroy the wall.
It's the combination of the fence.
But I'm, there's a different variance for the combination of the two for the height versus the setback of it. Do you know what I'm saying? There's a setback requirement for it, not just a height requirement.
Right, but that's, it's the requirement is that the combination doesn't exceed the height.
If there's a setback that it meets the setback, then there's no variance by height.
Okay, so you're saying, all right, I thought it was two separate, because the height of the wall plus the fence.
Needs a setback.
The height of the wall plus the height of the fence, when there's no setback, that's ordinance compliant, results in the height being higher than is permitted.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Bruce.
No problem.
Okay, so there, I guess then my question is, why can't they move it back the foot that is required?
I think it's four feet.
Yeah, it's four feet. I think it compromises the landscaping.
Yeah.
Well, the landscaping is new. All right.
But there are hollies, you can see the hollies along the corner there. Those are not new. Those are existing. I actually went down with this plan and spoke to Paula, and Paula said this would work. So I, you know, if there's an issue, I mean, let me know.
No, no, it works with the variance.
Yeah.
Yes, we acknowledge, we acknowledge we need a variance, and I appreciate what Mr. Whitaker said. I think his interpretation is exactly correct.
Yes.
That when you have a fence, I'll say, for lack of a better word, in the vicinity of a wall, the height is the combination of the fence and the wall unless the fence is setback from the wall a distance equal to its height, correct? And then it complies.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe I confused that, and I didn't want to. If I did, that was not my intent.
No, no, you guys helped. Thank you. The other one I had is the zoning table, and maybe someone can help me. The pool is included in coverage by all improvements. Is that correct?
Pool's just impervious, I thought.
But isn't that coverage, I don't know, Jane, I'm asking, that's my question.
Yeah, the pool counts.
Yes.
And it is included in the calculation.
So you're removing, so right now, if you, you're at, and I'm looking at the handwritten zoning table, is that the right one?
It may not be.
No, mine's all typed up.
All right, I'm trying, that's.
No, no, because the plan was, this rule, the plan was revised after that was submitted.
Right.
What you need to refer to is Mr. De Tomaso's plan in the upper-left corner. And you'll see when he does the coverage by improvement calculation, he has an entry for the pool, the patio, and kitchen area. So that's the, the answer to the question is yes, that is included in the coverage by improvement calculation.
Because the existing, so you're existing, so you don't have a zoning table. So right now, you're-
Mr. De Tomaso's landscape plan shows the coverage, but it's not on the chart for all the others.
I know, and that's what I'm trying, I was looking at the chart, and it shows an increase in above-grade cover of all improvements of only 235 feet. And I was just going to try and have him explain to me.
The building coverage, you mean?
No.
Mr. Rutherford in his opening stated that the coverage will meet the ordinance requirements as per Mr. De Tomaso's landscape plan calculations. So that supersedes what's on the chart that was submitted.
Understand. Trying to make sure that they're correct.
Excuse me, Bruce, I could help when it's my turn to testify.
Yeah, I'll leave it, Mr. Ball, I know the answer to Mr. Burgess, but I'll leave it to you, please.
Okay.
Diana, why don't we hold that in abeyance and we'll-
Yeah, please, just go right ahead. You guys can continue. I'm just going to figure it out now.
All right, so I think I went through all of the board member questions. So we'll open it up to members of the public who have questions for Mr. De Tomaso, the landscape architect. Is your hand virtually chat? Is anyone doing?
Can I come back in again? I'm sorry. Jane, you said the pool is included in impervious.
Yes, in, yes.
What's it included in?
In in total improvement coverage.
Right.
So I'm looking at his chart.
Which chart? The chart on the drawing, right? Not the handwritten one?
No, the one on the drawing.
Right. Look at proposed within 140-foot line. And go down the chart, you'll see pool, patio, kitchen, 1,554 square feet.
So you're removing, you're removing a significant brick? Like, how, if you look at the numbers from existing, what I needed to ask you was from existing to new, there's only an increase of 200 square feet.
Correct.
Where, how does that come about?
Where, if you, the entire right side of the property, I'm sorry, the the west side of that property, it's hard to see on this plan. It's ghosted in. It's all brick pavers. So we're removing all that. There's also a brick, look on the, look on the east side of the house, red brick to be removed. There's a walkway coming in from the side there, that that's all being removed. So I've removed quite a bit of existing paver patio to comply with this plan we have here.
Mr. De Tomaso, in your plan where you show existing lot coverage, existing lot coverage over the total lot, you have an entry there for rear red, I'm sorry, rear red brick, 1,172 square feet, correct?
Yes.
That's the area that you just referred to. That's what you were referring to a moment ago.
Correct, and it's all coming out.
And when you see your proposed lot total, you say rear red brick zero, because that's all been removed.
Correct.
And so you're increasing, but the pool, patio, and kitchen now are 1,554.
Correct. Correct, it did increase a little bit. But it still complies.
No, no, I understand, I'm just-
Yeah, if you went to the site, you'd see there's a lot of half of this backyard's paved. Do you want, do you have pictures of existing?
I'm just comparing. And you're getting rid of the stepping stones, the slabs.
Yep. And, and also a portion of that raised existing landing, that bluestone landing that against the house. If you can see it dotted, in a dotted line, it goes all the way across the back of the house. We're removing that, and we're just putting in a set of steps coming off the two doors. So all that was removed. That got me to comply with building and impervious as well.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we were, we're opening it up for members of the public if they had any questions. I just don't know if public people on. Nope, so there's nobody on other than the people that have to find right now.
Correct.
All right, so then that's going to go for, you let me know if anybody joins, but I'm not going to ask Bruce, unless you think I should, any more questions about who's got a comment or a question, unless somebody's-
No, we can, we can proceed with the next witness.
Okay, Mr. Rutherford.
We have Mr. Burgess, he's already been sworn. We're offering Mr. Burgess as a professional planner. I think his qualifications are are without question in the state of New Jersey, and I'd ask him to be accepted as an expert in the field of professional planning.
Mr. Burgess has been previously qualified before this board as an expert witness in the field of land use planning. And Mr. Burgess, nothing has changed in connection with your credentials since the last time you appeared before the board, correct?
That is correct.
And with that said, we can accept him tonight if, as an expert in that field, and he can render a professional opinion in that field. Please proceed.
Okay, good evening, everyone. When David first called me about this application, he asked if I could just run through the statutory criteria and how this application meets it. Len gave a very good description of the project, so I'm not going to go through all that again. And David, and I think the chairman, also commented about all the variances as a requirement of the application. When I talk about the statutory criteria, I would ask that you consider four particular issues that really weave through the whole issue of why I feel from a professional point of view that this application should be granted. The site is undersized, and it's irregular in shape, as you can see. There's a topographic differential that Len has already described. There's the site's location, particularly vis-à-vis across the street from Northern Parkway where Vets Field is. And then there's an actual vehicular and pedestrian safety issue with respect to the removal of the steps to lead down from the applicant's property down to Northern Parkway, which is a significant benefit here. And all that ties into the criteria. Now, I'm pretty certain that you're all familiar with the criteria. The statute identifies both the positive and the negative criteria, and the positive being one of two alternative ways in which an applicant can address the positive criteria. In this instance, we're primarily talking about the physical features test. That basically, that's the C1 criteria. And that basically says that if there's physical features that affect the ability to comply, the board can consider the application in terms of an approval. There's a second test, a public benefits test. And that indicates that if there's certain public benefits that will accrue from the grant of the variance relief, the board could also give consideration to that. To a much, much lesser degree, I would, I could also rely on that primarily, I'm gonna focus on the C1 criteria. In addition to that positive criteria, however, there's also the negative criteria. And as you know, that's a twofold test. An applicant has to show that there's no substantial detriment to the public good and an applicant has to show that there's no substantial impairment to the intent of the master plan. And the word substantial just isn't something that I am using, it comes right out of the statute. So in terms of the basis for the variance relief that's being requested, I believe that this is a classic C1 physical features argument. And there's two critical issues here. One is the issue of the undersized lot. The Ridgewood Ordinance requires for a corner lot, a 16,800 square foot lot. This property is 13,868 square feet in shape, in size. And the shape, as you can see from the exhibits before you, is somebody irregular. It has a width along Fairway Road of only 101 feet. The rear lot line directly opposite that to the south is only 49 feet in dimension. Northern Parkway frontage is about 145 feet and the mean lot depth along Northern Parkway measures about 87 feet. What's interesting is how the ordinance setback requirements affect the ability to comply. If you have a conventional 16,800 square foot lot, rectangular shape, in shape, you would end up having about 3,500 square feet of buildable area that you could use to put whatever it is you wanna put in your backyard. But by virtue of the configuration of this lot and its dimensions and size, the wardens only have about 930 square feet in that area to play with. That's significantly less than what the code permits, obviously. And in terms of the case law and the statutory burden in terms of physical features test, I think that is very applicable to the way you should discuss this application at the end of the evening. Secondly, is the issue of topographies that Len had indicated. There's about an eight foot drop from the developable part of the site down to Northern Parkway. Now, most ordinances require significant setbacks for swimming pools and corner lots because they wanna make sure, certain that the pool is not visible from the sidewalk or the street. And usually that plays out when you have a flat piece of property adjacent to, at the same ad grade as the street. But in this case, we have this eight foot drop. In addition to that, we have this significant landscape amenity that already exists on the property. And I think you could see that in from some of the photographs that I had submitted earlier. And then secondly, is the, not only the existing vegetation, but the supplemental vegetation that Len has provided to make certain that, from a visibility standpoint, no one walking down Northern Parkway or driving down Northern Parkway is going to see any onsite activity in this backyard. Now, another issue, and that is the fact that we are going to be eliminating that walkway down from the site, down the steps to Northern Parkway. And for any of those board members who have been to the site, you would know that Northern Parkway moves traffic at a nice, healthy clip. There's a curve in the road right there. And I know I have walked up and down that sidewalk, that stairway a number of times. And as a car comes whizzing by, it's not the safest of conditions. So by virtue of eliminating that, that stairway, it certainly represents a public benefit. In terms of the negative criteria, there is no substantial detriment to the public good. By virtue of the removal of the steps, for example, that represents a public benefit. The topographic differential that I mentioned earlier and the landscape amenity has been provided results and all onsite activity being adequately screened from the street. And as Judge Harris often used to say, you have to look at an application and determine, does this represent a better zoning alternative? And in terms of providing additional screening, the onsite activity onsite and removing that walkway down to the street, this clearly does represent a better zoning alternative. In addition to that, I looked at the village master plan and enabled me to conclude that there is no substantial impairment to the intent of the plan. One of the goals and objectives of the master plan is to preserve residential neighborhoods and it talks about specifically how important it is that demolitions or replacements or additions maintain the character of the neighborhood. And that's clearly what is happening in this instance. Another, another goal of the master plan talks about avoiding negative impacts to nearby properties and streets. And for all that I've just said, I think it's clear that there is no negative impact. And in conclusion, I think it's, all this enables me to say that we meet the positive criteria, we meet the negative criteria and it enables the board to approve this application. And if you do that, you'll be five for five for the night, it'd be impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. I don't have any further questions for Mr. Burgess, Mr. Chairman.
Can, can you hear me? I switched headphones.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Question on whether or not the comparable pool photos that were sent via email are gonna be presented as exhibits? Is that gonna be done at all or?
Yeah, we can do that, Mr. Chairman, yes, certainly. Mr. Warden took those photos, I think there were two photos and he's, I can just lay a quick foundation and he can tell the board very briefly about it, yes. If you'd like to hear, happy to do that.
Sure, because I, I think they, the questions that I have regarding those photos, maybe Mr. Burgess could address as well.
Okay. Mr. Warden, you were previously sworn and I think we filed two photographs with the board relating to a pool, a, a, a similar installation for a pool in, in the rear yard of a home on a corner lot, correct?
Yep.
So why don't we start, first of all, and tell the board where, the first photo you have on the, on the, on the screen is great. Where is that property located?
That's, excuse me, on the corner of Collingwood and Colonial.
Okay. And just orient us, where are we looking at the moment? Are we looking down?
I'm, yeah, I'm standing at the corner, looking up, um, looking up Collingwood.
Okay, so we're looking north on Collingwood, looking somewhat to the northeast and you can see the pool behind the black estate type fence there, correct?
Yep.
Okay, good, and then why don't you go to the next photo? Right, there we go, yes. And tell us where, where, that's the same pool, correct?
Same pool, just I've walked up Collingwood and I'm now looking backwards towards, towards Colonial.
Okay. And again, that pool is located behind a home, but we've only showed it simply because it's a similar type of situation very close to your, your property, literally around the corner from your property.
Yeah, if I may, David?
Yeah.
I think this exemplifies what I was speaking about earlier. Because here you have a, a pool that is at grade with the sidewalk and the street and you do have, you know, some, there is some visibility here. And in contrast, when you look at the photographs that I had submitted of the Warden's property, there's a, a, a wall of landscaping that you cannot see and will not see the pool and all the onsite activity on the Warden's property by virtue of Len's design. And that's a significant distinction between those photos and what's being proposed here.
I, yeah, I appreciate that. That really was going to be my question, which is, what are the differences between this pool? Just, you know, the pool is called the comparable pool versus what is being proposed? Because this pool here, you could clearly see it from the road. This appears to be at a time of the year where, you know, everything is at, at the height of its blooming and perhaps in the winter, you know, you're gonna see even more of it. So I just wanted someone to testify that, you know, the proposed pool and kitchen area is gonna be more hidden by landscaping than, than this photograph.
Yeah, I think the photo on the far left that I had taken shows that. And as Len had indicated, you know, there's a variety of seasonal plantings here and he's supplementing them as well to make certain that everything on site is screened. In addition to that, we are relocating the existing barbecue, which is close to the fence on the Northern Parkway side, to the far side of the property. So that could never be seen from the street in, in this condition.
We have two renderings that I did that will show you what their pool, our proposed pool will look like from Parkway right there. You wanna show them the other one? And we have one other one we could show you. Yep. Right there. Impenetrable.
Right.
And those are existing trees on the corner and we're gonna add to it.
Yeah, that's what deciduous is, right, Len?
No, they're not deciduous, those are evergreens right there on the.
I may never accuse.
Two old trees, there's two old trees that dropped their leaves, but we're gonna put evergreens on top of the wall to, to back up that deciduous vegetation.
Oh yeah, though these renderings are very helpful and they're very different from what we see in that comparable pool photo. That's my question, does any other board member have any questions for Mr. Burgess or anyone else? No one? Just to make sure, no one's raising their hand? All right, well, Mr. Rutherford, there, no members of the public online. The board doesn't have any additional questions of any of your witnesses? Do you have any additional witnesses or testimony?
No, I don't really, I don't think anything is saying, Mr. Chairman. I think the application has been, been very, I hopefully very clearly presented to the board. I think you understand what the basis for our request for relief is and we would ask the board to approve the application as, as presented. And I thank you for your time this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. The hearing is now closed. Open it up for deliberations, comments, motion?
Make a motion to approve submitted plans with a deed restriction that the plantings or, or plantings of similar, similar characteristics will be maintained for the life of the pool. Whatever that may be.
So Bruce, that would be a deed restriction or a condition in the approval?
Answer to that would be yes to both. It'd be a condition of the resolution that would then be done in the form of a deed restriction.
All right, so we wanna at least just ask, ask.
We've done this before where it will be running with the land, so it'll be a continuous obligation for the property owner to maintain that landscaping, to keep it so that it is not visible from the roadway.
Very good. Before we move on to a second, I just wanna make sure Mr. Rutherford and the applicant basically are, understand what the restrictions are gonna be.
Yeah, I, Mr. Whitaker, I have done these with the board previously and I have always styled it as a deed memorializing conditions, which means that the, to which we attach the resolution as an exhibit and, and I make clear that it does not necessarily vest rights in the public, but does, is, is recorded so that future property owners are aware of the action the board taken and the conditions it imposed.
So that, so that those conditions, so everyone understands that are conditions when they are imposed that the village can enforce.
Correct.
And by running with the land, members of the board, once again, no one can say that a new owner of the property, no one could say, I didn't know that, because it shows up in a search when they are purchasing the property.
Correct, yeah, I, I know, I, I, I can't consult with my clients, but I can, I can tell them just very briefly that the board, this board does this regularly and to my mind, not a bad thing because it makes all future owners of the property aware of the action the board took and the conditions it imposed. And as Mr. Whitaker just indicated, it does eliminate the possibility of a future owner coming in and say, I didn't know. I didn't know I had to maintain those plantings, I didn't know I had to do this. Future owners will be aware of it. My clients, quite honestly, would have the obligation to disclose this to a future owner anyway, even if it were not of public record, so I have no objection to that.
Okay, so with that, with that'll be Greg seconding.
Okay. Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negritz?
Yes.
Diana Rule?
Yes.
John Pepietra?
Yes.
Isaac Lebo?
Yes.
Matthew Bandow?
Yes.
Chairman of the group?
Yes, and we did go five for five.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to the wardens, good luck, enjoy that pool.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so we don't have any resolutions to memorialize, we approved the minutes. When's our next meeting, Jane?
Monday, we have meeting Monday night and Tuesday night.
Do we have a Monday and a Tuesday?
Yes.
All right.
And I only have two, I only have two on them, okay.
Okay. Anybody who's not available, just shoot Jane a note and we'll just make sure we have a call. But other than that, take a motion to adjourn?
I got a quick question, can I?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Bruce, I was reading their old resolutions. Do we attach?
We lost you.
Three percent gone.
Oh, sorry, do we put a copy of the zoning chart to the resolution? Is it something we can store forward? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Can you guys hear me?
I think Bruce left.
I think Bruce, yeah.
He didn't even say goodbye.
Irish goodbye.
Bye, Bruce. I'm just saying, 'cause I was going through these previous resolutions, this case, and I would like to have seen what the zoning chart previously said versus what. Just, like, you don't have, it was marked as exhibit of public hearing, but if it's not here, we don't have the whole item of this case.
I would think that would be a good idea, if there's no rule against it, we can request that it be done.
Yeah, it's definitely something you should bring. So let's bring that up with Bruce next meeting, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
For this, we were able to get those numbers. And I couldn't go back and find it.
Right.
Because they had to get a gross building area variance last time. I would like to have seen what the numbers were. Anyway, if you can ask, Sergio, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we have found over time that some people's mathematics were memorialized, but they weren't particularly accurate.
Yeah, no, but it'd be nice just as a comparison sake.
Yeah.
Again, half the things were flooded out anyway, so we don't have those.
Yeah. All right, I'll, I'll send them a note.
If possible, just a thought, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I, motion to adjourn. All right, motion to adjourn.
Go celebrate your son's birthday, Greg, next time with a different background.
Okay, I'll work on a better one next time. See if you guys posted.
All right.
Have a good one, guys, bye-bye.
Bye.
Night.
Night, everyone.
Thanks, Dylan.
Anytime.